And continuing to address the Americans with disability, AAACP is one of dedication and struggle to maintain equality and justice for all citizens of the United States. And whereas the local branch, like other NAACP branches throughout the state and country, diligently work on social programs aimed towards elimination of banning books, the rewriting of our vast contributions to this great nation emanating racial hatred, bigotry, and poverty. And whereas the Lake County branch of the NAACP is led by Rick Mayo, president and 1982 founder of the Lake County branch. And now, Mr. Mayo will come up. I will present you with the proclamation.
Proclaimations, we started way back, a long, long time ago, when Russell was still running around in his T-shirts, I think. Am I correct? How about that? Yeah. But it's important that we recognize the history of African-Americans in the country. And it's important that the city recognize the diversity that it has within its boundaries. And since the city government has always done that, you know, I commend you for the proclamation and for continuing to recognize the importance of diversity in the city of Clear Lake. And also, I would like to, just a little bit off of the plane here, but NAACP, every year in our proclamations, we recognize local citizens who have done extraordinarily things in the community. And Russell Cole is one of them, and he's in the audience. Cole Enterprises. And it's important that the community know who these leaders are, and activists in the community that's working every day, just like all of you are working for us, we're working for the citizens of the community with you to make the city of Clear Lake the shining star on the hill. I'd like to introduce Thomas Savas, my board member.
Thank you so much. I'm a local business manager here. I don't, I work just down the road here at A-1 Check Cashing, but I've joined with Rick recently as a member over a year ago. I'm also a chairman of the town hall, of Western Region Town Hall Advisory for Supervisor Crandall on the North Shore. So we try to give back our time, and we're for, you know, working for the rights of everyone in this county and bringing, making the county better and better in all facets. I've worked here for the last 15 years, and I also live in the North Shore, so providing, committed to helping that area as well. So thank you so much.
We'll now move on to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the City Council on any member, or any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. Please note that any comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Yes, now I have a list here of folks that have already signed up. Margaret Garcia. Margaret, you know what to do, but please come up, introduce yourself and where you live.
Hi. My name's Margaret Garcia, and I live here in the city of Clear Lake. Now, I'm not as familiar, I wanted to bring, or I did bring a USB drive that I was hoping that I could put up a few pictures. I don't know how much preparations needed for that, since...
No, we probably don't have the time for that, Margaret.
Okay. Well, then, I'm just going to hit the one thing that I meant, that I wrote down, was Yule Avenue runs from Olympic Drive to, well, it runs Clearback probably to Lake Shore. It's quite a long street. But where it hits Olympic Drive by the park, right a block away, I've had commercial vehicles that have churned and come down my street, which is Yule Avenue between Austin and El Vita. And this happened, first off, I wanted to thank roadwork that was done on Yule Avenue. They went ahead and put some patches in of asphalt, appreciated, but it's just a little band-aid on the actual problem. So I've had a commercial vehicle running down Yule Avenue, delivering to Tray Hose Cafe. And so, as far as I was aware, tractor trailers were not supposed to be allowed on residential streets. So I went ahead and I talked to the driver, who said that it's not, it's a city thing as far as commercial vehicles driving down residential streets. The kids walk up and down that street to go to school in the morning and in the afternoon. Not to mention, there's a lot of just regular traffic that's going up and down. So my request was that if we could have a no commercial vehicle sign posted, so that they would just stay on Olympic to Lake Shore, and then make their deliveries however they normally do, and that there's no need for them to be coming down Yule Avenue to deliver. I don't think they've ever done that on a regular basis. And so I'd like a no non-commercial vehicle sign posted at Olympic and Yule Avenue, by the tennis court, or by the park there.
I think perhaps you need to speak, could one of you speak to Margaret about that?
About the non-commercial vehicles?
No, I, we can't answer you. We'll look into it.
Okay. So how do I get an agenda item where you guys can actually answer me? Is that not, is that not at all how it works?
Please talk to Lieutenant Peterson about it.
Okay. Then, my other issue was drainage on Yule Avenue. And so, okay, so I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting, and then I could bring my USB drive, is that right?
You can put it on public comments next week, again.
I can't do a USB drive, is, I heard, not at all?
We can, we'll talk about it after.
Where's the city manager?
The city manager's not here.
Okay. All right, well...
Okay, your three minutes are pretty much...
Is it, is it pretty much up? You're sure?
I'm pretty sure.
All right. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Yeah, that's, you can, not hitting it. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Nobody in the audience? Are you just waving back there? Okay. Madam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise, or a staff has requested a change under adoption of the agenda, in which case item will be removed and for separate consideration. Any items so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda, excuse me. Chief Hobbs, are there any items to remove the, on the consent agenda?
There is not.
Council members, are there any items that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I second that.
Vice Mayor Sloten has moved to approve the agenda, consent agenda as presented, and Councilmember Wilson has seconded it. Please vote in your portal. Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, we'll move into our first business item. So, first item, item eight, looks like Chief Hobbs, will you be presenting that?
No, I believe Public Works staff will do.
Oh. Okay.
I'm going to pass this on to our Public Works Construction Project Manager for presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City Council is being asked to approve a contract for the 2025 Citywide Striping Project and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments. These, the improvements of this project include thermoplastic and paint striping throughout main roadways in the city. Bids were open on January 16th from the following contractors: Crisp Company, Central Striping Service, and Specialized Pavement Markings. Crisp Company was the apparent responsible lowest bidder for the amount of $437,625.50. This project is going to be funded by Measure V, and staff is asking council to move to approve the contract and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions, counsel?
Is there a listing of the streets that will be striped? Is that...
Yes, it's going to be Old Highway 53, which will be thermoplastic, Lake Shore Drive will be thermoplastic, Olympic will be paint, and we are also doing a design project on Olympic right now, so it will be thermoplastic eventually. School intersections and the damn road intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Are any coun, are any questions from the public? Come on up. State your name and address.
Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. I was out of the room, and I'm just wondering what, what areas are going to be, the striping's going to be done? Is there a map that can be seen? I missed that, so. Okay, so I can get the info from her?
Could you? Please repeat it.
Old Highway 53, Lake Shore Drive, Olympic, school intersections, and damn road intersection.
So not others, nothing more specific? I mean, because there's a lot of areas that are, you drive blind in around here. So can I get a more specific idea from somebody at some time?
No. No, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. She gave the... Are there any other publicly, comments from the public? Okay, we'll bring it back to counsel for discussion and possible motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll bring it back to counsel for discussion and, and action. Anyone have any comments, any questions, any?
I'll move that we approve the contract for the 2025 Citywide Striping Project and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% of additional unforeseen contract amendments.
I second that.
And a motion made by Vice Mayor Sloten, and seconded by Councilmember Downey.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, item number nine, consideration of award of contract for the Senior Center Landscape Irrigation Project, the recommended action of authorizing city manager to enter into the contract for the Senior Center Landscape Irrigation Project and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments. Again, I think...
Yep, me again.
You'll be doing...
You stole my thunder on the first part.
I applaud.
So this project was actually solicited to four contractors: Case Escavation, Lehman Construction, Granite Construction, and HD Excavation. We did not receive responses from Granite or HD, we did from Case and Lehman. Lehman is the apparent low bidder, $149,000. Staff is asking that the city council move to approve the contract and authorize the city manager to approve the additional 10%. And this is being funded by a CDBG grant.
Thank you.
I have one, I have one thing to add.
One more?
I wanted to let everybody know that we initially had put this project out to bid almost a year ago and had no one return a bid, so we spoke with HCD, who informed us to do an informal bid process in, for lack of having a, someone bid on the first round. So we did put it out initially, and no one bid on it.
Okay. Any questions from counsel?
I just have one comment. I'd like to see those numbers, at least in our reports, please.
Yes, we, we opened the bids today, actually.
Oh, okay.
The other number from Lehman Construction was $213,775.
Almost twice as much. Wow.
Any other questions from counsel? I have just a question. Tell me again, that's irrigation and landscaping, what all is the landscaping going to consist of?
Hydroseeding, mostly. They're going to disc and grade the site for it to drain, and then hydroseed after they install the irrigation system.
So are there going to be...
Grass.
Removal of trees or bushes, or just planting grass around them?
Nope, all the trees are stained.
Okay, I hated, I'd hate to see those walnuts go. I used to take care of them every once in a while. Oh, okay. Are there any questions from the public? Please come up and introduce yourself, although, although you don't need any introduction, but...
I will. Joyce Overton, City of Clear Lake. So one of my concerns was the walnuts. I really want to make sure that they, whatever they do, that doesn't hit those trees. Normally, they're sprinklers that have the splitters on them, so they go around, so when it gets to that point that goes around trees, so I just really want to make sure that that happens, otherwise the trees will rot. So, and I'm sure some people know that, but I've seen them put in where they don't do that kind of stuff, so hopefully that's something that they will consider when they're doing those irrigations, because I will be watching.
We know you will. Thank you, Mrs. Overton. Are there any other questions from the public? Madam Clerk, any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to counsel for discussion. Excuse me? Oh, Mr. Jones. Hello? We can't hear you. Just a second. Yeah, a little louder.
Okay, I'm trying to speak louder. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, it's good now.
Just a real quick comment. There was somebody on the Q and A on Zoom saying that they had a comment, we did respond, the city clerk did, saying that you don't get to make live comments on Zoom, you can post Q and A. They made an allegation that there's a Brown Act violation. Just wanted to clarify, there is no Brown Act violation here, that if somebody wants to make a statement via Zoom, they've got to actually put the comment in the, the comment or Q and A line, and we would read that. They don't get to speak live, so I wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay, shall I ask again whether, whether they want to comment in chat?
It looks like this is not on the current agenda item. I would leave that to the city attorney as to whether this is public comment.
Mr. Jones, do you hear that?
Unfortunately, I can't hear anybody from counsel. Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry about that. One sec.
And city clerk, do you see his comment? Can you read that?
Yes, I can read that. Okay. This is from Joshua McEwen, states, "I am writing to express my concerns regarding the current state of street maintenance on Mohican Place. As a homeowner in this area, I've observed ongoing issues that require immediate attention to ensure the safety and accessibility of this city-maintained road."
How does this deal with the item that's on the agenda? We can't take a, that does not deal with what's, with the item that we're discussing right now. Is that what's your opinion on that, Mr. Jones? I gotta get you on again. I didn't hear you again.
I think what happened is, he was trying to comment on the previous item where we did talk about road maintenance.
No.
So what I would suggest is that the council read, or city clerk read that item, and if that impacts any of the votes of the members, we would do a revote. If it does not, you just keep the current vote back in there.
How long is a comment?
There are two more paragraphs, it's not long.
All right, go ahead and read it. And we're going back to item eight, is that correct?
All right, I'll continue. Firstly, "It has become apparent that during maintenance efforts, the sewage drains on these roads were missed entirely. This oversight has resulted in improper drainage, further contributing to the deterioration of the roadway, and increasing the risk of flooding during heavy rains, as well as sewage backup in the homes. Additionally, while I appreciate the grading work that was recently conducted, it has unfortunately led to unintended consequences. The grading has left the surface loose and uneven, causing vehicles to slip, particularly during wet conditions. This poses a safe, a significant safety hazard to drivers and pedestrians alike. Mohican Place is a critical access point for local residents and should meet."
That, okay, that statement does not apply to any of the things on our agenda tonight, so thank him for his statement, but that would have, should have come under public comments. So, we'll move on, back to nine, and consideration of any discussion again, any other questions, and I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract amount for, Kristen, help me out.
$149,000.
To...
Case Escavation.
Case Escavation, for the Senior Center Landscape Irrigation Project, and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
I'll second it.
Motion is being made by Vice Mayor Sloten, and seconded by Councilmember Hooton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to item number 10, consideration of award of contract Alvarez Performance LLC for abandoned vehicle abatement program, towing, storing, dismantling, and disposable, disposal services. Mr. Lambert, are you making a presentation on this?
All right, so, Mr. Mayor and council members, the purpose of this item is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Alvarez Performance LLC for the towing, storage, dismantling, and disposal of abandoned and inoperative vehicles under the abandoned vehicle abatement program. In overview, every three years, the city goes out to bid for vehicle tow's, storage, dismantling, and disposal services under the abandoned vehicle abatement program. Vehicles towed under the Ava contract vary widely, including standard passenger cars, trucks, boats, and large RVs up to 45 feet long, ensuring the removal of hazardous and unsightly abandoned vehicles from public and private property. Vehicles towed under the contract range from two-door cars to boats to 45-foot-long RVs. On December 23rd of 2024, code enforcement issued a notice inviting bids for the towing, storage, and dismantling and disposal of abandoned inoperative vehicles. On January 29th of this year, three received bids were opened.
We have a couple photos to show prior to that part.
So this is just an example of some of the vehicles we tow in the past year. So bids were assessed based on cost effectiveness, compliance with Ava program requirements, and contractor qualifications. The contract includes three task categories covering different vehicle types and services. So Task 1 was basically standard vehicles and smaller commercial vehicles, duly pickups, things like that. We had three bids received, Alvarez Performance, All-in-One Auto, and Kelsoville Auto. Kelsoville Auto was deemed non-responsive, and if you look at the numbers, Alvarez Performance comes in well below All-in-One Towing. Task 2, only Alvarez Performance and All-in-One submitted bids, and again, Alvarez Performance came in significantly lower. And lastly, Task 3, again, Alvarez Performance and All-in-One were the only two bidders. Alvarez coming in almost half the cost of All-in-One Towing. So the overall results, after... So the overall results, after reviewing the bids, Alvarez Performance LLC was determined to be the lowest responsive bidder for Task 1, 2, and 3. Staff suggested motion is to move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Alvarez Performance LLC for the towing, storing, dismantling, and disposal of abandoned and/or inoperative vehicles within the parameters of the abandoned vehicle abatement program. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Are there any questions from counsel?
Is, 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 in the audience?
Yes.
Maybe if you ask him if he wants to make a comment.
I could do that. Mr. Alvarez, would you like to come up and make a comment, or are you good with what Mr. Lambert's presented?
Oh, good.
It's your opportunity.
No, we're stage friends.
Okay. I know, I know exactly what you mean.
Now we insist.
Counsel, have any other questions? Have any questions from Mr. Alvarez?
I do. I have a question. So with this bid, what is this exactly including, and how many vehicles? Or is this per-vehicle you're cleaning up? Or is this a job that's already been, like, scheduled? Like, you have specific vehicles you're targeting already?
I think that would be a bid, that'd be a question for...
So yearly, we're budgeted an amount, a set amount by counsel for the towing and dismantling of vehicles. I believe this year it was $50,000. So what we do is we take that and divide it by 12 months, and tow accordingly each month. Now, the problem we run into is sometimes we'll get an RV that's going to cost four grand, which, you know, deters us from being able to take other vehicles for that month. But it's a budgeted amount that you guys set, and the contract is, is for the tow services of each vehicle.
One question.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
How much do we get from the AVA part, from the county? It's from the county, right?
It's from the state through the county, yes. It's divided up to each jurisdiction in the county. It's based, it's hard to tell you in a set number. It's based on how many tow's we tow and the population within the city of Clear Lake. I would say roughly, a rough number without going way over, is probably about $3,000 a quarter.
Okay.
It's not what you guys allot at all.
Okay. So this is, the 50,000 is above and beyond the, what you get from AVA?
And I'm just, I'm just saying what you guys allotted this year was $50,000. It's been higher in the past. There's different times you guys will issue more money at mid-year budget, things like that.
Okay. Just for, for general knowledge, how many vehicles and RVs did you tow last year? Just ballpark it.
Chief, do you have those stats on you? I don't have them on me.
I don't have the numbers with me, but I mean, year to year, we range from, I mean, on the low end, over 100 to several hundred. And again, it depends largely on the budget. Our budgeted amount has ranged in the last five years from the 50,000 this year to 145,000. So obviously, when we have the higher budgeted amount, we tow a lot more vehicles.
It's always amazing how many of these rundown RVs we see along the side of the road. It's just mind-boggling. You have no idea where that come from.
Target-rich area. Any other questions from counsel? Any quest... Are there any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, are there any questions or any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to counsel for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more comment?
You may.
Just to look at the numbers from our last contract for standard vehicles, which is typically the most we tow, All-in-One for our last three-year contract was charging $250 a vehicle, and Alvarez is charging 100. So we're saving a significant amount of money.
Hope you can stay in business for that, Mr. Alvarez. Okay. All right. Again, any questions, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to award a contract to Alvarez Performance for abandoned vehicle abatement program towing and storing and dismantling and disposal of services.
I'll second that. Motion has been made by Councilmember Downey and seconded by Vice Mayor Sloton. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Onto item number 11. And I believe this is also... Mr. Lambert, you presenting again?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The purpose of this item is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Case Excavating in the amount of $229,400 for the demolition and abatement of real properties. A quick overview, in January...
He's just getting up.
Okay. So a quick overview, in January of 2024, code enforcement applied for a CalRecycle grant for the demolition and abatement of real properties. Each of the properties had open cases and had failed to reach full voluntary compliance and abate all violations. In the summer of last year, the grant was awarded in the amount of $477,469. November 7th of 2024, orders to abate, an order to abate appeal hearing was held before the city council for the 16 Phase 1 properties. Three appeals were submitted and denied at the hearing by city council. On December 23rd of 2024, code enforcement issued a notice inviting bids for the demolition and abatement of real properties. On January 15th of this year, 22 contractors attended a pre-bid meeting, which was the most we've ever had at a pre-bid meeting. On January 29th, 12 received bids were opened. The properties were determined to be a public nuisance and health and safety hazard. All required legal noticing was issued to the property owners of each property. An order to abate was mailed to each property owner and posted on each property. A notice of intention to abate was mailed to each property owner and posted on each property. Property owners failed to reach full voluntary compliance and abate all violations. So as far as the bid process, the city of Clear Lake conducted a competitive bid process for the demolition and abatement of nuisance properties. A total of 12 bids were received demonstrating a strong interest in competitive pricing for the project. The city has received a bid from Case Excavating in the amount of $229,400, which was the lowest responsive and responsible bid while meeting all project requirements. Selection was based on cost-effectiveness, contractor qualifications, and adherence to the project scope. So as far as where we're getting funded, this contract is funded through the CalRecycle Illegal Disposal Site Grant Program, which awarded the city $477,469 for property abatements. The remaining grant funds will be allocated for future abatement phases, ensuring continued progress in addressing blight and public safety concerns. Upon city council approval, the city manager will execute the contract, allowing abatement work to proceed as scheduled. This project represents a significant step in Clear Lake's ongoing efforts to improve public safety, eliminate hazardous structures, and enhance residents' overall quality of So looking at the bid results, there was one lower bidder than Case Excavating, but they were deemed unresponsive due to not submitting everything that was required in the bid. You can see that the bids ranged anywhere from 242,000 all the way to 662,000.
200?
600.
Where's the 2... Oh, okay, I see.
So now we'll just show you some of the properties that, well, actually, all of the properties that we'll be abating if the contract's awarded. So this is the first property, 16140 Property 2, 16273 32nd Avenue. 13790 Sonoma Avenue. 6347 Armijo Avenue. 14053 Hale Street. 14236 Hale Street. 3014 Fifth Street. 13535 Santa Clara Avenue. 16026 25th Avenue. And 3783 Cedar Avenue. So staff is suggesting that you move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Case Excavating in the amount of $229,400 for the demolition and abatement of real properties located at 16140 Dam Road, 16272 32nd Avenue, 16116 33rd Avenue, 13790 Sonoma Avenue, 3273 11th Street, 6347 Armijo Avenue, 14045 Hale Street, 14053 Hale Street, 14236 Hale Street, 3014 Fifth Street, 13535 Santa Clara Avenue, 5740 Hale Avenue, 16026 25th Avenue, 3971 Pine Avenue, and 3783 Cedar Avenue in the city of Clear Lake. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I have a quick question first here. We looked at these back in, what, November, December initially? And at that time, there were two gentlemen that were gonna hopefully go in and rehab theirs. Did that ever happen, or are they still on this list?
Yes, those two are not on the list, as well as one more additional one on Fifth Street that did a self-abatement.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Sloton.
Are we going to lean these properties for, to recoup this cost, so we can have continuance?
So, under, under CalRecycle grant, these properties will be leaned for the cost of the abatements, and then, once paid, that money is returned back to CalRecycle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to counsel for discussion and action.
I do have one comment. I do, I am happy to see that it is going to be a local company that is going to be doing the abatement, so I do like that. I like supporting local families and businesses, so I like that. That's my comment.
The other comments? Thank you for your comment. I, I always like to see local, things happen locally too, but we do have to follow procedure a little bit. Okay, I will entertain a motion. Come on, we're wearing Vice Mayor Sloton out here.
This is a long one, okay.
Well, you don't have to tell them all.
I don't have to say them all.
Just, just go to the, just go to the...
First part and then the second. Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Case Excavating in the amount of $229,400 for the demolition and abatement of properties on the list.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Councilmember Wilson and seconded by Councilmember Downey. I got that right twice. Shall we vote on our portal?
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel.
You're welcome, Mr. Lambert. Moving on to our last business item, which is a review of the city council norms and procedures. Madam Clerk, you will be presenting that, I get, take it? We're waiting. This is something we do, certainly whenever we have a change in council members, but it's also a great review for those of us that have been on the council to, to relook at these, just to make sure that we're, we're operating under, under how we should be. We about ready?
Yes, ready. All right, so it's time for the most exciting part of the night. Thank you, thank you. The city council norms and procedures, let's take a deep dive. Not too deep, though, because we don't want to be here all night. So for those of you who have sat through this exciting presentation before, I promise not to do too many PowerPoint slides and give you PowerPoint poisoning. So, you've been elected to city council. Now what? So we do have a document called the City Council Norms and Procedures, which outlines the roles and expectations for all of the council members and the planning commission and all of the committees that are under the city council. It's a key to facilitating productive and efficient council meetings. So let's start with the foundation, the values of the city council. The city council values respect, diverse interpersonal styles and viewpoints, courtesy, committed to a, to respectful disagreement and decorum, and fairness. City council members' opinions should be expressed individually and not represented as reflections of other city council members of the city, or the city. as reflections of other city council members of the city, or the city. So, understanding council responsibilities. The city of Clearlake is a general law city which operates under California state law, as opposed to a charter city making up their own laws in their charter. So, as one, the Clearlake City Council operates under the City Council Manager Plan, which includes the city council appointing the city manager and the city attorney, establishing boards, making legislative decisions, and overseeing the city manager and the city attorney. The council's core duty is to serve the community's best interests. The city manager's role is the... The city manager is the administrative engine of the city. He's responsible for the budget preparation, he's responsible for managing the employees of the city, and implementing the council policy direction. He's accountable to the entire council and not individual members. So, the council acts as a whole to give direction to the city manager and the city attorney. Attendance and participation is a cornerstone of the council meetings. City council members are expected to attend all meetings unless excused. Active participation is key to representing our community's interests and also to making informed decisions. Communication is clear and respectful. All official correspondence should reflect the council's agreed-upon positions at the dais. However, the exception would be, often, CalCity's urgent requests for letters of support or opposition can be sent by the mayor or the city manager if CalCity's position corresponds with the council's vision. Routine correspondence, such as thank-you notes, can be written without prior consent of the council. Additionally, emails, which, as we know, should be professional and respectful at all times. The council members also appoint regional boards, which represent Clearlake and represent Clearlake's interests. It is crucial to align with the council's position on relevant issues. And regular reports, this happens during the council member reports section of our agenda, is crucial to ensuring transparency and coordination. Transparency extends to information sharing with the council. All council members should have equal access to the same information, and this ensures everyone can make well-informed decisions. For example, if a council member asks for a document, staff makes sure that the document is then sent to the entire council. Ethical conduct is the foundation of public trust. Council members are required to take ethics and anti-bullying training. This mandatory training ensures that council members understand and adhere to ethical standards. It's mandated by the Fair Political Practices Commission and the California Secretary of State to promote responsible and respectful conduct. All right, so, open and public, the Brown Act. I'll go over the Brown Act real quick. I'm sure that the five of you have gone through many trainings, at least one for the new council members down south and along with our city attorney. Transparency is vital. The Brown Act mandates open meetings for all council, commission, and some committee proceedings, ensures the public's access and participation in our local government. So what is the Brown Act? It's a state law guaranteeing the public's right to attend and participate in meetings of local legislative bodies. It ensures transparency and accountability in government. So who is subject to the Brown Act? So elected and some appointed boards, councils, commissions, and committees of local agencies. For example, here in the city of Clearlake, we have the Measure V Oversight Committee, and they are subject to the Brown Act. Whereas, some ad hoc committees are not subject to the Brown Act. If they are for a specific purpose that's temporary, usually those are not subject to the Brown Act, and they're called ad hoc committees. All meetings must be open to the public except for closed sessions. Proper notice must be given for those meetings, which we do by putting the time, the date, on the agenda of the meeting, along with the location, and posting it here at City Hall and on our website. So, public participation, we give opportunity for public comment on all agenda items, and we do not exclude any member of the public from attending public meetings. There are limited exceptions, of course. For example, a closed session. Oh, I thought I had closed session on... Okay, so, closed session can be held in certain circumstances, or if there is a disturbance where the mayor must close the meeting at that time, then members of the press and the council can continue the meeting in a closed state, but that's very rare. I don't think it's ever happened here. All right, the agendas are the roadmap to our productivity. Agendas contain brief but informative descriptions of all items to be discussed. They are available to the public. We post them on the cabinet outside of City Hall. There's a cabinet to the left of the front doors. It's clear, it says "City of Clearlake" on it. We post all agendas there. We also post it on our website. The council's actions are limited to those items on the agenda. So, the cornerstone of our democracy, public participation. The council welcomes and encourages public comment on agenda items, asking for respectful discourse. Maintaining decorum and mutual respect is crucial for productive discussions. The council fosters an environment of courtesy and respect. Disrupted behaviors not tolerated, ensuring our meetings remain productive. Closed session. So there are limited circumstances when meetings can be closed to the public, and those are personnel matters, litigation, real estate negotiations, labor negotiations. Those can be closed session to the public. However, we do still take public comment before going into closed session from anyone that wishes to speak on those closed session items. All right, common Brown Act violations are serial meetings, which is multiple members discussing agency business outside of a meeting, improperly noticed meetings, failing to provide an opportunity for public comment, and discussing items that are not on the agenda. It's stuck. Sorry. Oh, my gosh. I thought that tonight was going to go smoothly. All right. Let me stop share. Let's try this again. My screen is black. Sorry, give me just one moment. Think I got it. Voila. All right. To continue, best practices for compliance of the Brown Act. We post the agendas in advance, make them easily accessible. We also have copies of the agenda, paper copies, outside of the council chambers before the meeting. The mayor provides clear instructions for public comment. We train all of the council members once a year, and we also train the planning commissioners once a year, and staff, and any new committee members or planning commission members as they come onboard. And we have our city attorney to consult with in case there's any questions that arise. So the consequences of violations could be legal challenges to those actions that were taken, court-ordered invalidation of decisions that were made, fines and penalties, and reputational damage. So, removal, a last resort. If there is a disruption in the council chambers, they may be removed from meetings to ensure the council conducts its business efficiently and respectfully. And for the safety of all participants, of course, we don't allow any firearms, weapons, or explosive devices in the council chambers. I would mention that it's specifically in the norms and procedures, so... All right, so, the exciting Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Okay, so, I will give $5 to anyone who can say that really fast 10 times. Just kidding, just kidding. Let's do a quick review, I know. All right, so what is Rosenberg's Rules of Order? Simplified parliamentary procedure for smaller groups. It has an emphasis on clarity, user-friendliness, and order, which is streamlined for the 21st century. So, in Rosenberg's Rules of Order, there are three types of motions. A basic motion, which introduces a proposal for consideration. It's used by the council 99% of the time, and you've done it several times tonight, so I won't go over that. There's also a motion to amend, which modifies that basic motion. And an example is, once a motion is made, another council member can say, "I move to amend that motion to whatever that change would be." It's not completely changing that motion. It's amending it to maybe change something from a budget adjustment of $5,000 to a budget adjustment of $10,000. There's also a substitute motion, which would replace that basic motion with a new one. So if, for example, using the example that I just had, there's a motion to adopt a $5,000 amendment to the budget, well, a substitute motion would be to consider a separate, completely different way of adding that $5,000. So instead of a budget adjustment, let's do a fundraiser. That's an example of a substitute motion. All right, there's also what's called a motion to reconsider, which allows a previous motion to be revisited. It must be made at the same meeting as the original vote, and only a member who voted in the majority could make this motion. So it's a motion to reconsider an item on the agenda that's already been voted on. And someone who's voted in the majority on that item can then bring it back for reconsideration for the council, and at that time, if this motion passes, at that time, the item is then discussed and voted on as if it were the first time. All right, voting. A simple majority is... Most motions pass with a simple majority, which for this council is three out of five. There are some items that take a supermajority, which is a two-thirds vote. For this council would be four out of five. Examples of an ordinance needing a supermajority would be an urgency ordinance. This ordinance would take effect immediately. Therefore, it's called an urgency ordinance, and it requires a two-thirds vote, four out of five, of the council members to vote in favor. A tie vote, if one council member is absent and the remaining council votes two and two on an item, the motion fails. A tie vote, the motion fails. So, courtesy and decorum. Maintain respectful and polite behavior, one person speaking at a time, and addressing the chair for permission to speak. Public speakers should address the council as a whole instead of individual members or staff. And we want to avoid interrupting others. So, just to reiterate, when a member of the public comes to the podium, they should be addressing the council directly, the mayor specifically, but the council as a whole. All righty, so, questions?
Are there any questions? Everybody still awake?
Yeah, are you all awake? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All righty.
That's...
Thank you.
I always enjoy listening to that.
I tried to dress it up a little bit this year. All right, thank you.
It's important, so thank you again. Okay, we don't... That doesn't require any action. So, we're going to now move on to city manager and council member reports, and of course, instead of the city manager, we're going to ask Chief Hobbs to handle that part of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I just want to give a little update on the Boils fire. As many of you may or not may know, the debris's cleaning up initially started in January, but was halted at the request of two local tribes. While state law does not require tribal consultation on disaster projects, CalOES has initiated consultation with the two tribes. There are no tribal cultural resources in the Boils footprint, and the city has been pushing to get the debris's cleanup restarted. Currently, the details are a little sketchy, but we've been told cleanup may start next Monday, or resume next Monday, with two different cleanup crews. We have been getting some complaints and hearing things from property owners that are a little frustrated with the delays, and they've been asking us to try and help move things forward with OES. Other than that, just wanted to thank the Public Works Director, Lebea, and her staff for all the work they've been doing the last couple of days in the rain, trying to keep the culvert, drainages clear of stuff and flowing. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Chief Hobbs. Any questions for the chief on that? Okay, then we'll move on. Councilmember Wilson.
I helped with the cleanup behind the senior center. I also helped with the pit count on January 23rd, and I attended the PEG meeting where we approved the budget, added three new members to the board, and discussed a partnership for podcasting with Kingdom Games.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hooten.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Downey.
I also don't have anything to report.
Okay, we're going to have to get you two to a meeting, so you have something to report.
To be fair, we were at conference all last week, so...
Well, that's true. You can tell us about that, all three of you can do that.
Oh, I guess we could. So, myself, Hooten, and Wilson, we went to Anaheim last week for new city council members and new mayors with the League of Cities, and we were taking classes all day, three whole days of classes, and we learned a lot, basically just every, like, on budgeting, financials, relationships, kind of like what, you know, we do, what our job roles are here in city councils, so, yeah.
So it was a good, a good three days, then?
It was a good three days. I don't like flying, so everyone got a taste of how I am on a plane, but, I mean...
Not as nice as going to Rancho Mirage for city manager's council, their committee meeting.
I'm sure the weather there is very nice compared to here.
It was 75 today and sunny, is what the report was.
Yeah, so...
Vice Mayor Slot. Vice Mayor Sloot.
I attended the Lake County Recreation Agency Board of Directors meeting last week, and we elected a new chair, Brandon Disney, and yours truly is the vice chair at this point. There were some newer members introduced too by the county, because it's two members from the county and two from each of the cities, and then we had some other people involved in it. Right now, Kim Costa and Brandon Disney are the two members from Lakeport. Helen Owen and Jessica Pyska are the two counties. Tara and I are the two from the city of Clear Lake. We also have some staff there. Lars Ewing, who is the Parks and Recreation guy for the county. And we have a public member, which is Don Smith, who works for Adventist Health. We approved white paper, and there were some... I have a copy of it here, but there were some minor adjustments being made. And as soon as I get the final version of this, I will share it with everybody. That's about it.
Wow, that was very, very detailed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended Risk Reduction Authority meeting last week. We also elected a new chair, Jessica Pyska. And I think secretary is Kim Costa, and I ended up being treasurer for some strange reason.
Really?
Yeah.
That is strange.
Yeah. It was Chief Sepeta that nominated me.
He recruited you.
Yeah. Anyway, we discussed fuels reduction projects and uses of materials, biomass. Where possibly we can create some jobs in the county and also create some more income in the county. So we're hopeful that we'll be moving forward with that with some grant monies that we're looking to get. I would also like to commend the Public Works Department on the last three days. Looking at the way the creek is running across from my house, I know you had a heck of a job and had a lot of issues, and you stayed on top of it. I've had a lot of positive remarks for the attention you paid for it. So thank you so much for that, and pass that on to your staff if you would. Okay, and then, then last, this morning, actually, three of us here attended the judge's breakfast, and the speaker was our own Supervisor Sabatier. And the talk he gave was one of the best that I... I think one of the best presentations that I've ever heard at a judge's breakfast, certainly, anywhere. Basically, what he talked about was the state of our country, and he went from the change from 1950 to today. And he went through it, and I can't do this justice, Bruno, but it was amazing. Usually at those meetings, there will be people fidgeting, looking, checking their voicemails, or checking their iPads, or playing a game on it for all I know. Today, I looked around, and there was nobody was doing anything but watching Supervisor Sabatier. I'm gonna try really hard to get that, if you'll do it, to do that presentation again and perhaps even videotape it, because it was really important in understanding our country and how we got there today. And perhaps at least, understanding how we got there in a very clear way, we can maybe help to make the changes to make things better. So I thank you again, Supervisor Sabatier, for that talk. Okay, let's move on to future addenda items.
Can I have a duodeck?
No. Yes, you may.
I just noticed I got a little alert that there's a rock slide. I assume you have it too. I got it by the boatworks, and I don't know if it's passable or not. Do you know anything about it at this point? Okay.
All right.
And also Rotary has a seafood boil on the 22nd of February, so there's still some tickets left, individual tickets left, but that's it.
Well, if we're gonna be announcing those kind of things, I...
No, you can go ahead.
Promise me to announce the Chappino feed that the Lower Lake Committee Action Group will be putting on on March 8th. So there's really never anything to do in Lake County. I think there's a crab feed in Lakeport in a couple of weeks as well. Anyhow, again, moving on to future agenda items. Council members, anybody have something they would like to add to the agenda? No, no, no? All righty, well, I thank you all for attending. And everyone, you know, took the time to submit their comments via Zoom or in person here. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:22.